After he pushed the window out for at least a half an hour and you're saying that you have increased supervision. Where's the increased supervision if our neighbor has shown and has documentation that that client hangs out the window again?
So, but this is good feedback for Sue to say, okay, we talked to the residents again and they still remain having a concern. So she can talk to the people they're supervising and say, you know, you have to whatever the whatever the remedy for that is. You know, I mean, we can only go on what we know today. So.
I think the problem is we brought these these things to her attention. She supposedly has taken action on him and nothing is being done. Words, as my wife likes to say, words are cheap. Okay? We need some action. We need something to be done.
Do you see any progress or you don't see any progress at all?
Like I said, we did see some, but we're going back again. And I have a feeling if it becomes off of the select board's agenda where it's just gonna be, oh, you're gonna talk to her. I have a feeling this is just gonna be longer and longer with resolution. And it's gonna be, okay, it's great. So Monday through Friday, these clients are out of the home. Most of us are working Monday through Friday. Now you have the weekends. When Saturday, I had to call the police because they, the people that work there, the staff, let this gentleman continue yelling where we could not live in our home. That's my concern. It's great that these steps are being done, but I wanna see them being done. And I have a feeling if it becomes off of the agenda where we're not all meeting like this, it's gonna be pushed to the side. I don't, we're at the point where I feel confident that there's resolutions being made. I, as a neighbor, don't feel confident.
May I speak?
We, just let, just let me respond for one second. We have on our agenda a place to monitor issues, okay? Marco can certainly include this in his weekly report to us and he can include this on basis. So that if it escalates or it doesn't get any better, the issue can come forward as an agenda item. Okay? So that's, now there's another gentleman that wants to speak. Yes, sir?
Yes, George Sanford, I'd like to speak again. Um, I, I'd like to mention that my wife took pictures three days in a row of the wooden gates to the backyard wide open 24 hours a day. So my concern is we have children in this neighborhood, we have grandchildren in this neighborhood. We have no idea what this young gentleman is capable of. And what I do know about autistic people is sometimes they can be extremely strong. So what's to protect the people in this neighborhood if those gates are not locked? And even if they are, it's just a four-foot chain link fence. He can hop that like nothing. So where's the protection for the people in this neighborhood? We hear, we hear, well, we're gonna do this and we're gonna do that, but we don't see anything. And that's part of the problem.
Okay, so what, so if we bring it to some conclusion here, what hearing, what I'm hearing you say is that we would like Sue to address chain link fence and security, we want to address supervision more. And we want to address the protection of the local residents, right? And when you've had an issue in the past, you've called the police, I would think that that's appropriate if it's so egregious that, you know, it can't be tolerated. I think more training with the staff that, that from, from Sue's point of view, that they must supervise these people more closely would be helpful to you. And then she's going forward with the plan for looking for a new location. So, um, I think that we have action steps in place. Um, it is up to the, is up to you to monitor, us to monitor, and Sue to monitor, so that we know that we're going forward with this. I do, my impression is that we have made some progress. Situation's solid. Okay, I will grant you that, but I think that some progress has to be made. So if anybody else has anything new they'd like to add, feel free. And if you don't, we're gonna put this on the agenda to monitor. Mr. Marco will keep it on every week for us, saying what he's, what has happened during that week. You are all free to contact him or contact us at any time if things get out of hand or you do have.
Glover, hear me.
Yes, pardon me? Did you say something?
Yes, hi, this is Paul Marsler and I reside on that 45 Oak Mill Drive, so I'm further up. Uh, and I have one matter that I would like to bring before the select board. Uh, and that is the speeding that takes place on the street. Because I'm further up and, you know, I necessarily, I don't necessarily hear the noise from the house, but it seems to be around shift change. There's speeding going to the workers that are going to work. Uh, and I would assume that they would slow down as they approached their place of employment. So the neighbors further down may not, uh, be witness to this. Is there something that can be done about that?
We will absolutely speak to the staff, all of the staff at the site, and remind them that they need to respect their bound, where they are. They need to be, follow the speed limits. We will reinforce that with the staff and, and.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. And it is helpful when a resident, if, you know, I'm not asking you to do our job. However, if there is a time when something is happening in the neighborhood, I've given my cell phone number to everyone there. You can call me and I will, at least we can then know, you know, if it's Saturday afternoon at three o'clock, whatever. We can, we can follow up with that staff member and reinforce what their job is. And, uh, again, I'm not telling you that you, you need to, um, do our job, but it's, it is helpful to us when we know when something is happening.
Understood. I believe it's a Toyota, if that helps.
That does help a lot. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, I think unless there's anything else somebody wants to offer, you can end this conversation. And knowing that you can be assured that we will monitor this and that we are, we're receptive to hearing your concerns forward, as is Ms. West. So if you have concerns, direct directly to her, feel free to do that. Okay?
I, I have one more question.
Yeah?
Um, I spoke to my neighbor across the street about, uh, putting in a speed limit sign here for this very same problem. And I was basically told that it would take an act of Congress to do that, and I'm not sure why that is. There should be a speed limit sign on every street in this town. I don't understand what the big problem is and why it's such a big to-do just to put a street sign there. Can someone explain that to me?
I don't know that we, uh, would have a major problem. Uh, I don't think that the town can afford to put speed limit signs everywhere on all the streets. But I will speak tomorrow with the highway superintendent, see what we can do.
I would appreciate that very much. I mean, I don't see why anyone on this street needs to go faster than 25 miles an hour. It's a residential neighborhood and a dead-end street. That should be a reasonable expectation.
I think that the, the highway department and the police department, we both have input into if, if that was in need in that area. Um, and I think we certainly don't like the street signs, uh, speed signs on every street. So, um, you know, but if they think that's a priority and if people have expressed a concern, uh, we can look into that further.
The concern is we don't wanna see anything happen to our children or grandchildren because someone decides they wanna speed. That's just wrong.
You know, maybe add a children at play sign as well.
I missed it.
Children at play.
Children at play. What do you, I, that man said.
Yellow signs that say children have.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay. Okay, is anybody else?
One more question. I just wanna clarify. So Mr. Marco will have contact with Sue West like weekly on updates or, I mean, what, what is the plan?
Yes, he has called me every week with an update which I passed along to the Board of Selectmen. I believe that, uh, it was also agreed that, that we would have this follow-up meeting with, uh, the Selectmen, um, at this time, several weeks, uh, later. She's called me and we've had two conversations since that first meeting.
So going forward though, what is the plan on how many times you're gonna get an update from Sue?
I assume that I'm gonna get a weekly update, which I will report to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Marco.
And thank you for your concern and, and we'll see if we can address positively. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me.
Yes?
Uh, Sue West had mentioned that, uh, temp housing was going through. When can we expect that that's gonna go through?
What did you say?
Temporary housing, that's what she had mentioned.
Yeah, so Brian's still there though.
I don't think they had a timeline for that. They were looking for it, but they, uh, they didn't have to share it with us.
Well, she mentioned something about the real estate market not being great right now, and I don't understand it. If they're not planning to sell the house, why does?
I think, I, I would assume they have.
The real.
I would assume they have to purchase another house to put the, for the temporary housing and that, and the real estate market. Doing that right now. You know, I mean, the, the, it's just.
Okay. Well, the real estate market's tough because houses are flying off the market, so they would just have to be on top of it, just like the rest of us.
They should consider selling because they'll make more money.
Well, that's, that's under her domain. I think it's, it's what she wants to promote itself. Okay? Thank you.
Yep.
Welcome back, Mr. Marco.
Thank you, Mr. Marco. Uh, Academy Hall painting. Uh, we did get an update from one of the two contractors who have submitted a proposal. He had reviewed the situation with lead paint. Uh, there are some instances of lead paint. He did not think it was a major problem and said that there were ways that you could address it. Uh, during the, the painting, uh, during the repainting of the building.
Did he have an adjustment to his quotes though?
What?
Did he have an adjustment to his quotes?
No.
Did he anticipate an adjustment or he was saying, I'll do it for the same price?
He didn't mention any increase in the price.
Can we follow up? And we have some time. I mean, we don't need the numbers today because we got the, uh, warrant, so.
I mean, it seems to me that he has given us a comprehensive proposal. I know that I think it's, I agree that, uh, it's a bit less than we anticipated. Um, he has gone out, unlike the other contractor, made an effort and, uh, has given us a response with regard to the lead paint. I will, uh, follow up and see if there'll be any change, uh, in the price that was quoted, so.
I mean, I like his effort. I like his presentation. And he followed right up. If he came back to this board and said, I'll do the lead remediation and won't affect my price at all, I find, I'd be hard pressed not to take his bid. Assuming you've done the, uh, the checking and the references, et cetera.
We have. Yes. Um, everything that I've been able to gather about this individual contractor is possible.
I, I was a little concerned that there was lead. I mean, I thought that, I was under the impression that the lead had been abated and that, um.
We were told, we were told it was there.
Okay.
And we were also told it was painted 20 years ago, it was painted 10 years ago. And we said that the remediation is all taken place. And the fact of the matter is it didn't. So now we're on this position where we have lead paint and we have to decide what to do with it. I think the $12,000 bid is a little iffy because we paid $20,000 10 years ago. And everyone tells me everything is sky high. Yeah, I didn't see it the 20, 10 years ago. I didn't see an arc on the warrant, going back into the late 90s for. Yeah, 2009, the, the CPA spent $20,000 painting it. And the historical society put in $735 and moved it over the thing. And, uh, we have an extensive report back then about where the lead is and, uh, apparently they didn't do anything about it. So now we have a gentleman comes in, we ask, no one tests for the lead paint until we say they do test the lead paint. We're told it was all taken care of, but he takes 10 samples, all 10 samples of lead. So here we are. Uh, can we, can we, I'm not, there's no, casting no spurs of the gentleman, but can we be assured that $12,000 is gonna take care of it? I don't think so. I mean, he's gotta do, he's got the house next door that he points out that has to be, uh, covered in some way, protected in some way. You can't, you can't, you can't power wash. He has to scrape, you know? So that's, you know, it's manual labor. It's, you know, you know, I break two boards in my house, it takes a whole day, so I don't.
Scraping is, is, is the, the main part of the, of the work. All the contractors now will do a combination of spraying and brushing. They call it back brushing. Spray on the paint and then go up there with a brush and go over it again.
But you can't power wash it.
No, you can't power wash it.
I, I, I think there's, um, a difference between commercial building and residential building.
Right. I asked that question of the building inspector. He wasn't sure and couldn't find the information.
He wasn't assured?
He wasn't assured. He wasn't sure and he couldn't find the information.
Oh, so what you have in your folder is what he gave me based on his research.
So you're gonna talk to the gentleman about this? This is a real, real question, right?
And now I'm not very familiar with this, but do they remove all the lead paint? Is that, or do they just encapsulate it?
They, they will, they will remove the loose paint.
Okay.
And that's, uh, assuming that it's had two or three coats of paint on these flavers. Probably the bottom coat has, has the lead, maybe the second coat as well.
The windowsill is a problem.
And the windowsill.
You know, there was lead, John said, it was sprayed before, but there's lead paint being created basically in the wood. So you're always gonna protect some.
So they're gonna scrape and there'll be some bare spots and they're gonna paint the spots.
I guess my point is if, if we're gonna paint it again, there will still be lead, potentially lead there.
There'd be some.
So we would always have to have the lead.
Yes.
They'd have to do whatever mitigation.
Whatever mitigation would be.
Yeah. And the only alternative to that is stripping all the boards. And then that would be a major chore, given the location of the building and you'd have to wrap it in scaffolding and, and put up scaffolding and wrap the building.
And then there were some questions about, um, just repair in different areas with the boards, right?
Yes.
And is he gonna fix those?
He said he's going to be doing repairs, uh, and, and painting the porch and.
Yeah, when we did the, uh, the exterior walkway, uh, we know it's a couple of more huge mountain posts. I think about when you and I went around the first five feet were taken care of, at the same time we did the gutters and the downstalls. So that part is pretty good. Uh, obviously the gutters are fairly new. The other concern, I think you saw the report about the, uh, fire station. And that's gonna, we have to get a price on that and address that. But I think if the budget we have for the Academy Hall, I think they were assured that they could be, you know, that inside that. Uh, fire station, what type of inspection report?
So, uh, I asked, uh, the building inspector to have the electrical inspector do a formal inspection and you have the results of that.
Right. Now, I understand that this is only for the work that would take to hook up the ventilation system, chance here in the generator.
I don't see the report, but all the estimates were based on, um, upgrading the service. Um, correcting the underside wire going from the, you know, to the generator and hooking up the.
Okay, so what he says is, find the attached list of code violations that the fire chief asked me to look at during an informal inspection on April 30th, which isn't here yet. This list does not in any way provide a comprehensive inspection of the building's electrical system, but just as it pertains to the service generator, service generator and the proposed ventilation system. For comprehensive reports, it's just an electrical engineer who would be hired to control it. So this is just for to get the ventilation system working and the generator.
Um, service upgrade, correct the generator and to give the service ventilation board.
In your experience, do you think there are many other things that would trigger a violation notice? Or are you saying pretty much in any building you go into, you're gonna find something, whether it's a home, you're always gonna find something that technically is a violation?
Uh, yeah, the building was built in 1964, I believe, and it's had existing, some still existing equipment. But when we talk about the electrical service and the generator, these are the main items for, uh, for servicing power to this building. Um, these aren't things that can be shrunk off or overlooked by. But again, just, uh, this is the main infrastructure that I'm building for life.
We got three bids for that?
Yes.
Ranging from.
$34,000 high and in the lower twenties low.
In the lower 20 low is aluminum, is aluminum wire, I believe?
Yeah.
And the high has got copper wire?
Um, the high one is, is, um, leave the copper wire and a different location of the panel as well.
Is aluminum wire good for how long? A week and a half, 10 years?
Um, aluminum wire is, is, um, too code, so, yeah, I don't think anybody can put an age, age limit on it. It's very commonly used for service entrances. Um, but it's a positive fact that I can attest the market goes now, copper is, is outrageous, um, there's enough. But I mean, it's common practice.
Right.
So the original bid was, the, the ventilation system was how much?
That's already been. We've already purchased that.
Yeah, but how much was that?
Forty, forty seven thousand dollars.
Okay, and, and, and we were anticipating that that was the cost, right?
Correct.
And now it's going to be 81 to 67, 67, 67 to 81. That's a significant increase, I would say. Well, I, I have just general concerns that, um, we gotta look into things more carefully when we start. That we know, which, which, same with the paint, you know? These are, these are two situations that are pretty similar, um, in that you go in thinking it's gonna be one cost. And then all of a sudden you have another unforeseen, which we have, unforeseen at least to us, um, expenditure. Um, so I, you know, I just make that point. That's.
Under the point, I sent the, I sent the, uh, I put it on the one, I tried to put it on the one drive. I don't know if I got there or not, but. A proposal that we bring up in the next meeting about setting up a, I call it a facility inspection team, made up of the, you know, the building inspector, the plumbing inspector, the chemical inspector, to, you know, quarterly or semi-annually or something, just inspect our buildings. So we can maybe get some kind of. Must've been watching our capital meetings. That's what I proposed when we proposed it. No, I didn't watch it. But, you know, you know, you know.
Well, and somebody else proposed it. Didn't you propose it just recently of saying we should have a facilities manager?
Yeah, I think we're on the same page, about six weeks. If we could, uh, share facilities management, a facilities manager with the regional school district.
All right, key thing right now, let's, I think for comments, the assessment is just as important. You got the fixing, but let's get the assessment done. Fine, we don't have to fight over lots of things, but. Um, I did propose to the board that we do things, sure that I do think this is imperative to get done. Fast track of this would be new, as Bob's pretty experienced with. Uh, line transfers, that I would make first, identify some accounts for the take care of the money needed. And I think presenting a proposal to the advisory time would be proven that we would like to go this way. I think, I think the least we have to do it, do it to him. I mean, we spent a half an hour last week, uh, or a week, a week or so ago, arguing about $5,000 being transferred. So now we're talking $19,000 to $30,000. And if, if, why couldn't we do the Academy Hall thing the same way? Cause we already knew to pay $2,000 for that, right? If the historical society was in every way. And we could, you could easily transfer that into, I don't think anybody thought that this was gonna be the low bid for Academy Hall. So, so I think what we need to do is talk to the advisory committee tonight and see what they compare.
When you, when you transfer money though, is there as much transparency to that as there would be if you just went to a warrant and said we need more money to do this?
No, cause the town was a vote.
And the town doesn't know about it, but unless they.
Unless they watch the meeting.
Before, before they'd be here or whoever's watching the meeting. Um, you know, and I think it's, it's important that we get the word, you know, I mean, just like we would be victims of increases in, you know, wood prices or steel prices or any of that kind of stuff, we should share that. And I think we should, this is a, this, I, I would like to have this shared in some forum. I don't know, this has to be a warrant question, but I think it should be shared. I don't know how to do that, but what the best way to do that would be.
Right, so we'll talk to the advisory board today.
And I can either take this article off or leave it on and what we could pass over it.
Well, we never voted to put on the warrant. We closed your warrant. This was added in there.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about the Academy Hall.
Oh, we got it all?
Yeah.
Scenic water district expansion, like a sponge here. I think Bob, myself, uh, Dean, you got a pretty good shape. You should find a map in your, you know, Bob's got a description plus the map.
I did the article today.
Yeah.
Um, and in the, in the back, uh, there's, there's one scheme. And there's another one that John, uh, did based upon, uh, our GPS.
Is the yellow? The yellow is just when you go in the GIS system and have the highlight on the block. There's no significance. No, I had a quote.
Or we could do them both. Here's the other, here's from the back of.
Yeah, but I don't think that's relevant. I mean, circling the. You know, that's the town hall, that's, uh, not that broad, that's the, that's the highway, that's, you know, these are the projects. That, that, that's, that's got the town hall, the fire station and. Yes. Plus the four dollars.
I like having them both as attachments because this one's a graphic of what's gonna happen and that's.
I agree with that. I mean, that's the channel lane, but this is what you need to move the district.
Yeah.
The question I had to Bob was, um, do we need to do something to the roadway? Or since we're traveling inside the traffic way, we have the right to do utility, it's, it's just covered out now.
Either, either we could do both of these, both combined, you know, put, put the labels on the other map. So people knew what they were looking at. I know one, John Mount Helsman, I understand, but before I don't know what he's.
Oh, that's, that's a town.
Yeah, but I, I would say, if I was a person sitting in the audience, I'd go, what is this? You know, there was this one for the audience that's not looking. This one was very clear, you know, but this one is more professional. This is the professional one that you. You know what I mean? It's, yeah, so if it could be combined, I think it makes a lot of difference.
We got all the words. Uh, Rose was looking at the wording for that, Maryland?
Yes. Uh, town council has reviewed all the articles. Uh, I've made a couple of tweaks based on what town council recommended, except this one, which I did this afternoon.
Along this line, I'd like to bring up the board, since as Bob said, we've got, oh, god, like 1.5 plus coming from the American Rescue Act on the state. And we appreciate being rescued, although we didn't know we were distressed. Um, I think it'd be prudent to maybe reach out to the highway superintendent and say, what would be your plan? We're gonna have up to $900 left over.
Yeah.
You know, no, but I mean, not right now because I'm on the spot, but saying, you know, what should we be looking at with that $900? And bring them into the conversation. Let's get that, that started.
I did, uh, tune in to the MMA program last week, which is on their website. Well worth, uh, reviewing. It's on what can be done, what can't be done. We don't have regulations yet from the treasury. But just reading the act, they conclude that water, sewer and broadband are permitted. And whether or not there's flexibility to do other things there, not determined at this point. But certainly if there's flexibility, there's things we can do. And we are gonna have a lot of money left over.
So with over for things like that, maybe the fridge repair, cause it's water and infrastructure, things like that.
And is there new grant money now for, for road reconstruction, like for the Allen, for the Allen Street thing?
Only the chapter 90, uh, and we have, we still have the, the money from gambling commission. The infrastructure legislation that's in Congress, I'm told is going to take four to six months before it's completed. So it's doubtful that we would get any money that we could use in this. before it's completed, so it's doubtful that we would get any money that we could use in this construction season.
Now, go back, we wouldn't talk about the timing, which is important, we're doctors alive first, we have authority to spend those action town meetings. When would we, we expect to see the whole detail of spending the American Rescue money? At Silverman?
Whenever the Treasury comes out with the rates, and I don't know that I've seen a date. I'm sure they're gonna be under some pressure to get it out there, everybody's asking these questions.
This gets back into, I think we talked about it briefly at the last meeting. I won't say playing the market, but the, the danger is there. We're gonna see construction firms, you know, filling their, their books, getting jobs out there.
Oh, yeah.
And if you're telling, you know, you may not get the regulations till August on this, we wanna get the work done in September, and everyone's like, well, I'm sorry, I'll go through our code. And it's gonna be, even though we have the code, we saw what happened last time, you know, with the pandemic affecting things, the board might want to say, look, we might want to put a higher number on there and add your bet, just to make sure, you have to spend it, but you don't have to go back and ask for more. And then what you don't use gets returned to another project.
I think it makes sense to proceed forward with the, the Scandic District Expansion, and, and proceed with the planning for the construction.
But I'm saying, if Ian Bond said, look, we went down to bid right now for that project, what we talked about, it's six seventy, whatever the estimate was, but if you're gonna set that contract out in August, and everybody's gonna work, homes is full of work, and this guy is full of work, you're gonna be spending eight hundred thousand because.
Well, I think, I think that's true.
Yeah.
With all the money coming out of Washington, going into the economy in various ways, it's reasonable that the prices are gonna increase. We may have a problem with inflation.
And all I'm saying is, when we come with a number at town meeting for this, the board may wanna consider a higher.
A little higher number.
Right. Again, if it's all coming from the thing, it's not natural, it's not gonna be raised appropriately. The worst that would happen would be borrow, you can see the other room, I think. Borrowing anticipation, but as Bob, you said, borrowing is cheap.
What if they say no, like, well?
I think. You said, Bob, there's no, yeah, you could tell, and you don't know the product. Right.
It's pretty clear that water projects are gonna fall off.
Yeah, but I, I, I guess, I wonder if they're talking about water projects like Flint, Michigan, or, or water projects like cleaning up the Cuyahoga River.
Well, we're, we're like Flint, with a couple of houses.
Or do they, do they care about, you know, Hampden, you know, four houses and a fire station that needs water? I mean, I don't know.
Well, I agree with you that it'd be nice to have something in writing, saying, people go over your project, see the interim report, and we agree that this will qualify okay first.
One of the other things that I saw that, one of the other things I, I struck him was that, they suggested a, a listing section, session of the company, you know, like a needs assessment type of thing. You know, what do you think's important, you know, the broadband, the big thing is, is, you know, whatever other projects they can think of that might fit in there. Also, they talked about the fire, fire department being able to get money for vehicles as a second, but that's second.
Yes, I heard the same.
And they said to apply for that to FEMA first, and if they don't get it, then you can put it on the air.
No, I, I heard the same, and I think, you know, we wanna go forward with the article, but I think we need to be a little flexible about funding it.
Relative to the other grant that I mentioned, it's the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant, and it's from the state of Massachusetts, and the deadline for application is May twenty-first. So, if you want that, or did you get that?
Isn't, doesn't that require that we belong to the Safe Streets Program?
It doesn't say that, I don't, I mean, it may, but it doesn't, it says, you can read through.
All right, I'll, I'll look at, that's. That's the DLS.
All right, so the Scandic Water District, that's the wording in there.
We have ten minutes before the advisory committee comes in.
All right, noise issue on Colony Drive, is that jumping available?
Said he would be.
Yes, right here.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Smith, what happened?
All right, can you see me and hear me? Hello?
Yeah, we're fine.
All good.
Okay, all right, I gave Mr. Markle five sheets of information, hopefully you have a copy each of the individuals there concerning my problem.
Why don't you give us a brief summary?
Oh, that's just great. I put a lot of work into giving a five-page report with details about this problem to Mr. Markle. He assured me he'd reproduce it and have it available for you.
We'll, we'll, we'll get a copy of it, but give us, can you give us a brief summary?
Okay, I'll do that. So here's the problem. We have an inconsiderate neighbor who retired last year. He decided to start playing amplified music outside on his deck every good day all last summer and now into this year. Problem is, it makes us absolutely miserable, we can't enjoy our, our home. My wife has Alzheimer's, and I have medical problems. I've been affected directly personally by this music, and I have a prescription Prantor-Pazoli forty milligrams a day. I have Parkinson's disease. We do not need this noise. What we're seeking is a permanent cease and desist order. There is a Mass Noise Regulation three ten CMR seven that applies to this state and town that limits noise, and it applies in decibels. It says you cannot increase your noise over ten decibels over ambient. I went out and bought a noise meter, I've got it right here, how do I show it? There we go. And started taking readings. I have a logbook, logbook is right here. So it turns out that he has played music thirteen times, amplified music thirteen times this year alone, all of Easter Day, one night until ten P.M. We've called the police six times last year, so they tell us that they can't do anything because there's no noise.
Or there's. Oh.
Legal bylaw in this town, which is true. However, there is state law that is a, a legal document. And according to my attorney here, the other part of this is that this is, what's going on is defined as, what he said is criminal breach of the, breach of the law, breach of the peace. And that is the duty of the town to protect the citizens and enforce this law. So that's a quick summary.
Have you spoken to your neighbor about it? I'm sure you have.
We have not, because this is a man, you gotta hit on the head with a two-by-four to make, to get anything. Now, my attorney wrote, wrote a letter to him last year saying he's, that, that this is a big problem, of course, he, he did reduce the volume somewhat from party level, trust me, absolute maximum velocity, to, to levels that are still breaking the, the Massachusetts regulations. So there you have it. Now, what we want is no, no music. Trust me, now, people can trivialize this program, or this problem, rather, and laugh about it, but I'd love to have you come down here and live in our shoes. You know, and you'd understand this. It's not a lasting matter, it's not a trivial problem, and it's also a health problem. Any other thing I didn't mention yet is I've had a heart attack seven years ago. I'm sure y'all don't need what's going on, we need somebody to help us.
Mr. Smith, is this, is this during the day, or is it late in the evening, or?
Well, I can show you my log, but the long story short is, it varies, but oftentimes it starts at noon time and it goes all the way up to nine o'clock at night. Sometimes it starts at five o'clock in the evening and goes to nine o'clock at night, it goes every, every weekend. Friday night certainly from five to nine, or thereabouts, when they have company. Obviously, if it's raining, they don't play music.
Yeah, this, this is out, is it always outside?
Say again?
It's always like outside on their deck or floor.
Yeah, their swimming pool and his deck. I'm not sure where it's located, it's probably been located on both. Now, I measured the distance from his swimming pool to my window, and it's a hundred and fifty feet. Unfortunately, our window is facing his noise source.
And I'm not familiar with the, that regulate, the state regulation, but does that have a, a distance of?
No. It's very clear, it's very short, very short sweep.
Okay.
There's no, there's no, just interpreting it, and by the way, I, I, I provided a copy, sadly, it disappeared, I provided a, a one-page copy of the essence of it. I'm looking at it here, and it says, you cannot raise the ambient sound line at the property from sound level measured at the property line more than ten decibels. And any police department, Board of Health, or building inspector, inspector can enforce it in the state of Massachusetts.
I want to advise Mr. Smith, call me. The next time this happens, I will give him my cell phone number tomorrow. If he calls my office, call the office, I'll give you my cell phone number, call me when it happens next. I'll have a police officer go out there and measure the decibels to see if, in fact, enforcement is possible.
Well, wait a minute, that's, that's nice, but that's only part of it, the other part is, suppose he's not exceeding the decibel level. We want to stop playing music, because that, you know, the, the decibel level is not the entire problem. We're not gonna set, we're not gonna quit until he stops playing music. Trust me, it drives you nuts. And I have in this written information, which you did not get, that we have gotten in our car and gotten away from here because it makes us miserable.
Right. Well, we'll get the information that you sent in, we'll take a look at it, and we'll, we'll have Mr. Markle give you a call.
I think the only way that we can focus on this, rather than just hearing after the fact, is to let us know, let me know, when it happens. And I, I assure you, we cannot prevent the, the individual from playing music. We can prevent him from disturbing the peace. And that's where the police would come in.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, and my lawyers, by the way, are concerned, playing this music is disturbing the peace. If you, if you are not gonna act on it, my lawyers will.
I'm telling you, we'll try to act within the law, using the police department the next time this happens, and it is a disturbance to you, you'll have a number to call.
Well, huh. Well, okay. All right.
Put that, all right?
We'll see what happens, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
The time is up. It's seven o'clock on the news.
Well, here they come.
Pages of the warrant.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
You have the pages all on, and tell me which articles to remove. I should remove the article that would appropriate money to cover the upgrade of the electrical system, okay? Everybody agree on that? And I should leave the.
Leave Academy Hall.
Leave the Academy Hall article on the warrant.
Want us to move, we'll get on there.
No, we can start, we, we can start soon, so you guys are done with your meeting, right?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll be like, like observers.
So I can, I can close this out? And we, we did bring the speaker in.
We restarted it too much.
Oh.
You guys can stay there, because we're, this is.
Sometimes this will be a quality soil.
The mic works fine, provided that's preferred on, I have heard it often.
Provided it's wet, Bob?
The mic is screwed up.